Hello and welcome everyone. I'm Deb Brinkman, President of the League of Women Voters of St. Louis Park. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of St. Louis Park, I'd like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates and those viewing this forum on Civic Channel 17. A reminder that tonight's forum will be replayed on Park TV Civic Channel 17 until the completion of the general election on November 8. The League of Women Voters sponsors candidate forums to provide the public an opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues that are important to members of the public. The League is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. All viable candidates have been invited and everybody is in attendance tonight. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan or political purposes. We encourage our League members as we encourage each of you to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. We ask that you consider becoming a member of the League of Women Voters of St. Louis Park and help us to continue to provide citizens of our community the opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues that are important to you. For more information about membership, please contact us at l w v s l p dot org. I'll be moderating tonight's forum, the St. Louis Park School District 283 School Board Candidate Forum. The following candidates have filed to run for two open seats. The term ending in 2023 is Virginia Mancini and Martha Hernandez Martinez. The term ending in 2025 is Sarah Davis and Linda Trummer. Welcome everyone. Tonight's candidate questions will include questions from constituents submitted by email to the League of Women Voters and also from the League of Women Voters of St. Louis Park. We'll be using a timekeeper tonight so that everyone has the same amount of time to respond to questions and Shelley is going to be our timekeeper. We'll hold up signs when there's 30 seconds left and then she'll hold up a stop sign when it's time to stop. So please just finish your sentence and then we'll move on to the next person. We'll begin tonight's candidate forum with opening statements. So statements will be given in the following order and they'll be limited to two minutes each. The first person will be Virginia, then Martha, then Sarah, and then Linda. We'll be alternating candidates when we do questions so that each candidate gets to respond to questions as a first time. And then each candidate will have one minute and 30 seconds to respond to the questions. We'll move to closing statements sometime around the 8:15 or so. So first we'll start with opening statements and again first we'll start with Martha Hernandez. Excuse me, Virginia Mancini.
Thank you. I just first like to thank the League of Women Voters for having me and having the candidates. This is really special. My grandmother was a member of the League of Women Voters and she always emphasized the importance of not only the League but also voting. So this is super special for me. I'd also like to thank the audience for watching and to hear what I have to share about myself and my vision for St. Louis Park Schools. My name is Virginia Mancini and I'm asking for your vote on November 8. My husband and I have lived here for 18 years and my daughter is a freshman at the high school. She started her first St. Louis Park class ECFE with Peggy, if you know who Peggy is. I have a master's degree in education and I have taught English Language Arts for the last 24 years. I was appointed to the St. Louis Park School Board in March when a former board member stepped down. In my capacity as board director, I serve on the Linux Advisory Board and as a high school liaison. In February, I stepped up to the board because I deeply care about our students, our community and my profession. I know from firsthand experience that right now we're hurting in public education. The kids are hurting and educators are hurting. And we need strong leaders right now to get us through this moment in history. On Sunday, Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan asked, "What gets you up in the morning to do this work?" My answer was so easy, students. For 24 years, I have been a staunch advocate for students. When I started teaching, I knew that schools were not welcoming to all students. So I set out to change that. I became the GSA advisor, which is the Gender Sexuality Alliance, and our Racial Equity Student Advisor. I am a racial equity advocate for Education Minnesota and I serve on the Human Rights Committee for the American Federation of Teachers. I get out of bed every single morning with the same energy that I had 24 years ago. I believe my lens as an educator and my experience in leadership will be an asset to the school board. So I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. The next candidate we'll hear from is Martha Hernandez Martinez.
Buenas noches a todos y a todas, y especialmente aquellos que no tienen voz y que no pueden entender lo que escuchamos antes, porque nuestra voz no se escucha en este distrito. Good evening to all, especially for those who cannot understand the voices that we're sharing early here, because our voice doesn't exist in this district. There are no conditions over there who really made this district a district that is inclusive and accessible for all. I am Martha Hernandez Martinez, a proud member of this community who has lived in this country for the last 20 years, who was a proud member of the League of Women Voters, who were the ones who registered me to become a voter the day that I become a citizen in this country. So I'm a proud member of the League of Women Voters and I have seen as a member in Winona County, the difference that it can make, especially for those like me who don't have a voice. Because our language, our origin, our culture, our special abilities or disabilities made nearly impossible for us to participate in these democratic sexes where we're all supposed to have a chance. Having said all that, I moved to St. Louis Park six years ago in preparation to get a chance to my son to have access to valuable education. I am an immigrant from Nicaragua, Central America, one of the poorest countries in the whole continent. I was raped by my grandparents and they showed me the value of education. They showed me the value of community. They showed me the value of places inclusive and welcoming for all. This is part of the reason why I decided to run, because I want to be part of a community where I am welcome and I am really, really included. So thank you.
Thank you, Martha. The next candidate we'll hear from is Sarah Davis.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I'm Sarah Davis and I'm running for school board. I ask for your support and your vote honor before November 8. I have lived in St. Louis Park with my wife for almost 10 years. We chose this community because of shared values. We have two children, ages two and five, and our five-year-old just started kindergarten this year. So I'm now also a proud St. Louis Park Schools parent. I currently serve on the school board and I'm running to continue this work for three key reasons. First, I believe that every child deserves an excellent education and a welcoming and nurturing learning environment. Second, in order to accomplish this, I believe we must be accountable to adopting and implementing anti-racist policies and practices. And third, because I have the skills, experience and commitment to advance these goals as a leader in our district. I'm a lawyer and I've dedicated my entire career to advocating for children, representing children for free who otherwise could not afford an attorney and leading restorative circles and family group conferences and schools. I'm also an experienced policy advocate, working towards sustainable youth justice systems transformation at both the local and state level here in Minnesota for the last decade. I was appointed by Governor Walz to serve on Minnesota's Juvenile Justice Advisory Committee and I also serve on the Hennepin County Youth Justice Council Steering Committee. I'm currently the Executive Director of the Legal Rights Center, a community nonprofit law firm here in Hennepin County, where I focus on working with our communities to seek justice and promote racial equity for those to whom it has been historically denied. I genuinely love serving on our school board and I'm so excited about what the future holds. I'm asking for your support honor before November 8 so that I can continue this important work. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And last we'll hear from Linda Trummer. Linda, you'll need to turn your microphone on.
Yes, unfortunately, we cannot hear you. Like we couldn't hear you when you agreed to the recording, so please.
Thank you. Now I'll begin. I'm Linda Trummer and I've lived on the north side of town for 47 years. As a single parent, I raised my amazing son, John, who graduated with the class of 2001. I was the outreach coordinator for the Meadowbrook Collaborative, a partnership of the city, school district and Park Nicollet, working with the former Meadowbrook Manor apartment community for 25 years. My involvement in our district began 36 years ago with community education. I was chair of the Childcare Parent Advisory Council and then the first chairperson of the Community Education Advisory Council, which I helped create. I have since been involved in St. Louis Park in many roles on commissions and councils as a volunteer. In my retirement, I founded and administer an online support group for a global community of 1,300 cancer survivors and their loved ones who are dealing with a rare incurable lymphoma. I'm running for school board because our mission statement makes no sense to me. And I want to make sure that all of our children are receiving the toolbox they need to be successful and our teachers and support staff are an integral part of the process, properly trained. I'm sorry, properly trained. I just lost my place. No, I got thrown off. I'm sorry. Let me just say, do our teachers feel valued as they should? When staff and families leave our district, are we asking them why and trying to learn from them? Are we sending our children to school in kindergarten, ready to learn? What about teachers and principals on special assignment? Wouldn't it be more prudent to contract with professionals with expertise in the areas they serve rather than taking teachers out of the classroom? How are we collaborating with others to maximize? I totally screwed that one up. Sorry. Thank you.
No, you did just fine. Thank you, Linda. Next, we'll proceed with our first question and we'll get one and a half minutes for each of these questions. Again, Shelley will hold up a 30-second timer and then a stop timer. So the first question is going to go to Martha Hernandez Martinez. And the question is, what are your key policy priorities for St. Louis Park Schools?
You know, I will say unfortunately, after my conversation and the other school, the first opportunity that I had to speak with parents, I realized that there are a lot of things that I was thinking they were priority, especially mental health. But now I realize that there is no a culture of inclusivity in this school district. I was very surprised and very disappointed that we continue using the tactics of all politics, really excluding people, not really giving chance and even not giving chance to speak. Like this forum, it's a great example about how we really welcome people, how we really talk to people, how we really guide people in this. If it was very difficult for some of you to function and soon, can you imagine how it will be for an immigrant parent, for an immigrant child, for a child with disabilities? Yeah, this whole forum is following the traditional white culture forum. It's not really inclusive. It's not really welcoming. It's not really so in a way that we people who don't belong to the majority can really fully participate. And as I see this, I kind of wonder how are the classrooms? How are really teaching and preparing our children for a more diverse world, for a more inclusive world?
Thank you, Martha. And the same question to Sarah Davis. What are your key policy priorities for St. Louis Park Schools?
Thank you so much for the question. I think this is really critical. So as soon as I joined the school board, I joined our policy committee. I have deep experience in engaging in policy work and some of my key priorities for our schools as it relates to policy are equity, inclusion and transparency and accountability. Our strategic plan for racial equity transformation resonates deeply with me. And you know, I'm a queer parent in a multiracial family. This is deeply personal and you know, when we look at excellence in education for all of our students, we need to be accountable to our policies, to implementing anti-racist policies and practices that advance our equity goals. One of the first things I had the chance to work on as a school board member was our racial equity policy, our inaugural racial equity policy, which I voted for and supported, and working on expanding our gender inclusion policy to include in addition to students, families and staff members. And another key priority for me as a member of the policy committee is to make sure that our policies are clear, are understandable, accessible and that in that sense that they're transparent so that we can be held accountable to those policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And we'll go to Linda Trummer. What are your key policy priorities for St. Louis Park Schools?
As a Puerto Rican woman, I think it's really important that we do a better job reaching out to members of our community that we have done a poor job reaching out to and hearing what is important to them. I think we do a great job hearing from people who are mainstream, but not building into the policies, things that are important to the rest of our community. And I'm not very good at saying these things because I've kind of been out of education for a while, but I've done these things in my work at Meadowbrook. I know what it's like to work with populations of people who haven't been heard, people who are isolated. And I know how to reach them. I know how to speak with them and I know there's a way to hear them. I guess I agree with Martha to an extent that we need to find a way to do that. So I very strongly believe in that. And I'm not sure it really matters what color, the color of a person's skin. What matters is whether or not they're engaged in the process.
Thank you, Linda. And then we'll go to Virginia Mancini.
Great, thank you. I think that this is a super important question because as a school board member, where we actually have power is policy. Where we can affect change is through policy. Where we can advocate for our students and our teachers is through policy. So I think the key policy priorities for me are two areas. Number one, the living our values and putting policies behind what are our values as a community, as our students, and taking in that communication and then putting policies in place so that we live them. And one of the important things that I think Sarah helped with with our policy is that she moved our gender inclusion policy from the 500s, which is what covers students, and she moved it into the 100s. So it covers the entire community. It covers teachers, families, students. And why that's so important is this. When you develop a policy but you don't give it any teeth, it makes it very difficult for educators who really care and want to live our values to do it, to carry it out. The other important thing that we've done as a board is we've put accountability, baked it into the policy, which is another way to give it teeth. Are we where we should be? No. We are moving towards that direction though. We have a group of caring adults who are super smart in a room and we are looking at the policies that we can put into place to live our values. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. All right, the next question, we will start with Sarah Davis. And that question is, what qualifications do you bring to the table that are important to be on the school board or what unique qualifications do you have that you could apply to the school board at this unique time? Two uniques in that question.
Thank you so much for this question. I think I bring some really important perspectives. First of all, I'm a parent of a current student. Our oldest child just started kindergarten. It's a really unique perspective and time to be serving on the school board as we're beginning our journey as parents and family in the St. Louis Park Schools. I'm also queer and I think representation really matters. So that gender inclusion policy that Virginia was talking about and that I mentioned in my last answer, when I read that policy, when I met with the students in the prison group at the middle school and we talked through who it covered and what it applied to, it was really clear that it didn't, there was no language in that that made it apply to me as a parent in the district. It didn't apply to any teachers or staff in the district. And so we needed to make some changes and I think, you know, centering the voices of those most impacted is really critical. And then I have been a lawyer for 15 years and I've dedicated my entire career to working with young people. I have worked as a restorative facilitator in schools across the metro. I've represented kids who can't afford a lawyer for 15 years and I have a deep understanding of our education system. Oh, I'm sorry. Can y'all hear me? I'm having some internet challenges. I have a depth of understanding that my professional experience brings and that I think is, has proven to be really valuable already as a school board member and I hope to continue to bring. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And next we'll go to Linda Trummer. Would you like me to repeat the question? And your microphone's not, it needs to be on again.
I am really not good at this Zoom thing. It's not my generation. Go ahead. Yes, please repeat the question.
Great. Yeah, no worries. And I know that technology is a challenge and so we just hope that everybody is respectful and patient as we kind of work through our challenges. So no, it's not easy and ideally we would like to be in person, but. All right. So the question again, Linda, thank you. What unique qualifications do you bring to the table that are important to be on the school board at this unique time?
Well, for 25 years, I worked with a lot of kids, hundreds of kids, who came from all walks of life. And we figured out how to help these kids become successful by taking advantage of resources, limited resources, and collaborating with a lot of different partners because we didn't have a lot of money to make things happen. And I know, I know how to do that and I know the importance of listening to their parents, listening to the children and figuring out ways of making that work and never stopping. I mean, there's just, this is, we're back at a time because of what we just went through with the pandemic of needing to make sure that our kids are getting the resources that they need to be successful, especially our kids who are coming from circumstances. You know, we still have kids who are living in poverty, I'm sorry to say. And we need to help those kids move forward. So let's figure out how we're going to do that and I think I'm the person who can help do that. And I'm not afraid to speak my mind. I'm not afraid to step forward and make that happen. So that's what I bring to the table.
Great. Thank you very much, Linda. And we'll go next to Virginia Mancini. What unique qualifications do you bring to the table that are important to be on the school board at this unique time?
Great, thank you. I live and breathe in schools. Every single day I am in the schools. I am with my students. I am with my colleagues. I am working with parents. I teach summer school. I volunteer after school. I am in the schools and so I see the impacts of policies on everyday lives of educators. I see the impact on students. And something that I talked about later or earlier with policy, having the, we need our policies to have teeth. And so if we have these policies in place, we need to make sure that that accountability is baked into it, but also we need to make sure that it's a doable thing. And when I, when you live and breathe and work with kids and colleagues every single day, I bring that vision and that lens to the school board and I'm able to provide it. And I think that's an important, I've also worked in their community as well. So I served on the Human Rights Commission for three years. I'm a parent in the community. I volunteer in the community. So I bring both my educator lens as well as my parent lens. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. And then we'll go to Martha Hernandez Martinez. Do you want me to repeat the question?
No, I think I got it, but I wasn't being aware that I'm keeping time. I had noticed as a researcher and evaluator, then we will pay attention to data. Then we have not been kind of consistent in offering the time to all the participants. So this one of the first things that I think I will bring to this position. I pay attention to data. I have been a researcher and evaluator for the last 10 years. I understand what is policies, but also understand as a, somebody who had a master in public policy from the University of Minnesota, understand clearly the connection between policy, practices and procedures. You can have a policy, but there is no a real practices. It's just on paper. I am also somebody who have a license in psychology from my native country, who work as a community psychology. So I understand the relations and the dynamics, especially when there is conflict. Yeah. And finally, I will say, as somebody who understands the importance of communicating and translate it and really, really be transparent about information, that's what I would like to do when I'm sitting at the board. Ask the right questions, ask for clarity and clarity in a language that all parents in this school district can understand. We don't have to have degrees to understand what we are seeing in the business. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. The next question, we will begin with Linda Trummer. And the question is, did you support the referendum? If so, can you tell us why?
No, I did not. I didn't support it because I think that we are spending wastefully in our district money on purchasing furniture that we don't need when we have quality furniture that's sitting in storage. I think we're giving away technology, computers to students that perhaps don't need it. I have no problem giving computers to students who do need it. I don't think we're spending, I think we should be budgeting for capital improvements for boilers and roofs and things like that and we're not doing it as we should. I don't have a problem with referendums for if we're doing our budgeting properly and I don't think we're doing that. So no, I did not, I did not support the referendum.
Thank you, Linda. Linda, your microphone is off. If there were more comments, we can get them at the end. Okay, the next question is going to go to Virginia Mancini. For the same question, please.
Thank you. I did support the referendum and I door knocked all around St. Louis Park. I showed up to neighborhood meetings to get the word out because education has been chronically underfunded from the state for decades. We don't keep up with inflation. And so as a result, we are always having to go to the, our voters for support. The tech levy was a super important thing to support. It is, it is not just getting the proper equipment in hand and we need to prepare our students for the 21st century. We need to prepare them. And there is not a job out there that's not going to be connected in technology. And not only do we need the equipment, but we also need the support staff to help teachers and educate, or excuse me, educators and students with that technology. And as a parent of a swimmer, and having gone through elementary school, we needed that bond referendum because our schools are falling apart. The pool is falling apart. We are, the heater broke, there are tiles falling off of the, the pool. So I absolutely supported the bond referendum. I absolutely pushed and pushed and worked my tail off for the capital levy as well, and I'm very proud of it.
Thank you, Virginia. And we'll go to Martha Hernandez Martinez.
No, I didn't. And also, Virginia can answer my point because is everything is falling apart, so how effective have been the use of the funds? Yeah. I will be, as I say, as a researcher and evaluator, I would like to sit down and review the allocation of funds in detail. Because it seems to be that schools are under construction all the time, like the roads in Minnesota. I cannot wonder how we are making the decisions, where are the contractors, what is the priority? And technology, there is a great divide in technology in this state. One of my research was focused on that, and we discovered that, again, immigrant, low income, and minority families don't have even half of the access to resources internal technology than the majority who is white middle class. So when we say we are really giving access to technology, are we really giving access to everybody? Are we really allocating where we need to allocate it? And actually, I'd rather to pay a better salary to our teachers than have a piece of technology, then it doesn't really going to benefit the teacher.
Thank you, Martha. And last, we'll hear from Sarah Davis.
Thanks for the question. Yes, I did support the referendum. I voted for it as a school board member after a lot of time in research and speaking with district staff. And I also worked hard in the community to support passage and voted for both, yes, on both questions. I fundamentally believe that both of these referendums were critical for the future of our schools. And I'm really grateful to our community for supporting. More than 70% of our community members came out and supported. This was not a question about whether we have a referendum to raise teacher salaries or replace boilers. State law does not allow us to have a referendum that would allow us to increase teacher salaries. If these questions had not passed, question one was about all of the technology needs for the district for the next 10 years. That's our staff, all of the computers, all of that for the next 10 years. Question two is about build, our building bond, critical safety improvements and updates. Virginia mentioned some of those. If these had not passed, we would have had to take the funds out of our general fund, which would have deeply impacted the daily lived experiences of our students and teachers. So strong yes for me and deep gratitude to our community for supporting these. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. So this next question, we will start with Virginia Mancini. And the question is, what are your thoughts about COVID-19 measles, polio, and other vaccinations for all St. Louis Park teachers and students who are eligible? And how do you respond to parents who don't agree with recommended vaccinations?
While I'm a teacher, and I will say that I was, I was amazing and so amazingly grateful to our governor for making sure that the COVID vaccine was made available to educators who are coming to school every day with kids. Because we needed to be there. We needed to be in school. We needed to be with kids. So I'm really grateful for the efforts that he did. I'm also grateful to St. Louis Park for all of the work that they did to get the vaccine into the community. At the time, I was serving as chair of the Human Rights Commission, and I was not in constant, but in frequent communications with the team at the district office because they had free clinics for families to go to to get vaccinated. And I am so grateful for the effort of our community to pull together our work with City Hall, the work with the district. So I am very, very grateful for the fact that the vaccines were made easily available to any parent, any family, and any teacher.
Thank you, Virginia. And we'll go to Martha Hernandez Martinez.
I should disclose that idea research about COVID, Community Coordinated Response in this state. So I'm totally biased, and I truly believe in the value of vaccine. I come from a country where we don't have a lot of luxury, and vaccines have saved people's life. But also I understand that I live, fortunately, in a country where people can make choices. If families had decided that it's in their best interest not to have a vaccine, I have to respect that. Because I came from a place where you don't have an opinion. And having an opinion can cause, then you lose your life. But at the same time, I recognize value and actually measure the impact of vaccine, especially in immigrant and refugee communities. And yes, they save lives. And as they save lives, I hope they continue to be offered. And not just for COVID-19, but for the future. And of course, I want everybody to have the chance, especially our teachers, our nurses, our people who clean the rooms in the school, which majority are people like me, immigrants, when this name and this last name to have access to vaccine, to be vaccinated. So when they are cleaning the tables where our children had lunch in the school district, they are safe. So absolutely, I agree about vaccine, but also I understand the importance of respect for other people's opinion.
Thank you, Martha. And we'll go to Sarah Davis.
Thanks for the question. I am also deeply supportive of vaccines. They save lives. And really grateful to the leaders in our community and our state who really helped move the work forward to be able to get vaccines out to folks. I'm a parent. I have a five-year-old and a two-year-old. COVID has been deeply isolating and challenging, you know, and up until the point they were vaccinated. We had a lot of fear about what might happen if they caught COVID, and I feel like at this point, we're still very cautious, but we, we feel confident that they won't end up being hospitalized. And, and this is not just about my own kids. This is really about the health and safety of all of our kids and community members when we talk about vaccines, right? It's also an equity issue. COVID specifically has had a significantly disproportionate impact on BIPOC communities. This has been demonstrated over and over again in terms of the harmful impact. And so I think it's really important that we pay attention to that. In terms of responding to parents or other community members who might disagree, we do have exemptions in our state, both medical and non-medical exemptions that parents can seek. And so I'm familiar with that with my law background and with leading a law office. And so I think being able to talk through that, those opportunities. But I am deeply supportive of vaccination. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And then we'll go to hear from Linda Trummer.
Well, as an immunocompromised person, COVID put me in the hospital for five weeks and nearly killed me. So I am in favor of vaccinations and, and support the idea that people should be vaccinated whenever possible, although I do understand that's not always the case. I hope that changes and that it becomes more like it is with all childhood vaccinations.
Thank you, Linda. The next question, we'll start with Martha Hernandez Martinez. And that question is, do you think hybrid or like rotating learning online and in person, or remote learning should be a permanent option for students who are interested?
Well, again, we talk now and that about the class divide, the racial divide, and the accessibility device. It can be an option, but you know, there are a lot of families who join a room. There are a lot of families who doesn't have access to a high-quality internet. There are a lot of families that don't have devices. Yeah. There are a lot of families where children have to share a room, and they don't have any space in their house to have a quiet time for them to attend school. And we also know very well, and in this way, I'm very grateful, that schools serve more than just class. It's a place for a lot of them to have a moment for themselves, to have a food, to have the support of the teachers and the other staff around. So as we consider giving the choice to those who can have their private rooms, we should consider to those who are not as fortunate as those who have had all the material resources around. Yeah. Let's not just stop by saying it's equity. Let's really practice equity, but equity where we have clear indicators that is really used.
Thank you, Martha. And we'll go to Sarah Davis.
Thanks for the question. I am supportive of having remote learning opportunities for students for, and for, if it's a student and family for whom that is the best option for them. I'm really excited that St. Louis Park is developing Park Virtual. And it's, I'm sorry, has rolled out Park Virtual, and I'm really excited about having the opportunity for students and who, for whom a remote learning experience is a better fit for them. I've worked with, with hundreds, if not thousands, of kids over the past 15 years. And some, some young people just simply can't manage in a, in the social environment of a school. And so whether it's for mental health reasons, medical, medical health reasons or other, I do support having the opportunity for remote learning. I have concerns about hybrid for our teachers. I know a lot of folks who are teachers in that it, it can be really exhausting to be expected to be teaching in a classroom while also teaching students who are online or at home. And so I'd want to learn more about what that could look like. But overall, I am supportive of the work that we're doing to make remote learning possible for students.
Thank you, Sarah. And Linda Trummer.
You know, as I'm listening to some of these questions, I really want to ask the teachers, not, not me. Because I don't know the answers. I, I, I want to ask, I want to know what the teachers feel about, about these things. I just don't know the answer to that question. It seems like something that is a good option for some students, but then for other students, it seems like just the wrong thing. And, and I agree with Martha that some of the accessibility issues might be an issue. But if we can figure out a way of, of remedying that, maybe not. But I just don't have an answer, and I'm not afraid to admit that.
Thank you, Linda. And Virginia Mancini.
Yeah, great. Thank you for the question. If I understand, one part of this question is, should it be an option, and it already is? Remote and hybrid learning has been an option for a really long time. The hybrid that I understand prior to remote learning is that students, there are, they are sometimes online, doing online things, and then sometimes they're in person. So the, I don't think that we'll ever, at least public education in the next two years, won't go back to like teaching online. And so people in front of you and online at the same time. But I think that it's important that we are evolving. I just finished a global learning fellowship through the NEA Foundation, the National Education Association Foundation. And I learned remotely. I worked with professors from Harvard and professors from the University of Nebraska. And I collaborated, I met in my cohort, my small, my small group. So I think that students are already learning remotely. And what's so great about the bond referendum is that now we have money that we can put towards creating spaces at the high school where students who are taking advantage of that remote option can stay in the school, still do their classes in school, but then they can also go into the commons area so that they can continue to do their remote class. And I think it's a great option. There are a lot of students who end up taking music or art.
Thank you, Virginia. And the next question, we'll start with Sarah Davis. And the question is, how should we be handling safety threats? What else should the schools be doing to keep the staff and the students safe, both at school and at extracurricular activities?
Thanks. I think this is a really important question, so thank you for this. I think what we're doing is, is what we should be doing, right? And so all the research clearly demonstrates that the best way to maintain safe school environments is by building relationships and investing in having safe and welcoming schools that are inclusive and recognize and value the full humanity of all of our students and school community members. That is very, very clear from all the research that is out there, and that is central to the work and the mission statement of St. Louis Park Schools. And so I feel really good about, about the work that we're doing. And I think in, in terms of what else can we be doing, you know, really engaging with our students about what they're seeing and what their concerns are, but really, at the end of the day, it's the relationship building that is going to keep our school safe, that's going to keep our extracurricular activities safe. You know, I've been practicing attorney for 15 years. I've represented kids charged in criminal proceedings and, and a restorative practitioner for a decade, and restorative practices are more effective than court. And it's hands down because people are more accountable to relationships and the art of rules any day, and that applies to kids and adults. So for me, it's about what we are doing, relationships. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And Linda Trummer.
A simple answer, I agree with Sarah. How about that? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. And Virginia Mancini.
Well, since we had our first lockdown drill today, I feel like I can speak to this. I too believe so strongly in restorative practice. And for restorative practice to work, to be able to repair harm, you have to build relationships first. There has to be a solid foundation of relationships so that when harm has happened, you can repair that harm. I also want to just lift up some of my students. Because that's important too. When you build and affirm identities and build relationships, you build stand-uppers. That was the term that my daughter learned when, I don't know if it was in second grade or third grade, but filling the bucket, or you want to be a bucket filler and you want to be stand-upper. And the threats that I have experienced in my career have been dealt with because of the stand-uppers. Because I have students out there who see things and they believe in their community, they believe in the support that they're going to have, and so they stand up. So I think that building community is, and affirming identities is super important in that when kids feel like they are a part of a community, they can be stand-uppers.
Thank you, Virginia. And Martha Hernandez Martinez.
Well, let's first please unpack, what do we mean when safety? And for who? And when? Because that bringing back to the previous question, are we talking about safety remotely, hybrid, in person? Are we also talking about emotional safety, mental safety, physical safety? It's not a simple answer. It's a very complex question. And for me, what I really speak is about And for me, what I really speak is about community. One of the great lessons that I have had by moving to this country is how schools can be a dangerous place. In fact, how every place now in America can be a place that you don't feel safe. I grew up in a place where we had a civil war. Twenty-five thousand young men died during the time that I was going to elementary school. And I never feel unsafe. I never felt unwelcome. For me, having horrified the idea, then every morning when my son left to school, I kiss him, pray him, then hopefully he come back safe. I still wrestle when this idea done. Somebody can kill our children's in my school. Somebody can bully our children's online. So I will steal some of the time that Linda share to us by answering, and she's agree when Sarah, I'm willing by all of us to really think about what it is to treat us with respect, to be transparent, to be honest. Because if we don't treat ourselves in that way, what can we expect from our kids? What can we expect of the world's safety if we are not safe among ourselves?
Thank you very much, Martha. All right, the next question, we will start with Linda Trummer. And the question is, what ideas do you have for ensuring early childhood education supports our goals and how is it going to improve our current literacy, the current literacy of students? I guess I should say impact. Sorry about that.
Yeah. I focused a lot on early childhood when I was at Meadowbrook. We had, we partnered with whoever we could to be able to provide free programming for any kid who was getting ready to start kindergarten. So all of our three and four-year-olds got free pre-kindergarten programming so that they were ready to learn when they started kindergarten. It was a very successful program. And I was really surprised to learn that we did not have such a program in St. Louis Park. All these years later, we did not have such a program in St. Louis Park. We offer a program, but it's not free. We do have some scholarship funds available, but not a lot. So my goal would be to make sure that we are working on finding funding to offer that kind of program available to any kid who's ready to start kindergarten so that they're ready to go to school to learn.
Thank you, Linda. And next we'll go to Virginia Mancini.
Yeah, the, the research supporting early childhood education and its impact on literacy is irrefutable. I mean, it's, I mean, it's out there. And I recognize that the district could do more with early childhood, but it is not the district of St. Louis Park's fault. The state legislature needs to give us money for this. And the state legislature should give us money at all levels, in all students, excuse me, in all districts. And there are advocates for early childhood out there who are doing the work and understand the importance of it. And I just want to also remind everybody that there was nine million dollars that was left on the table where that, some of that funding would have gone directly into early childhood education and would have directly impacted literacy. So I would argue that as a district, what we can continue to do is support the program and understand it's important. My daughter, as I said before, my daughter was a part of ECFE and we built it. And she was, it was an amazing program. So I think that advocacy at the state level is an important job of any school board director. And that's what I would do.
Thank you, Virginia. And Martha Hernandez Martinez.
What better indicator than inequality is present when we talk about equity? Than access to early childhood education? It speaks by itself. So again, we can talk about policies, but what is the practices? If we cannot guarantee early education, especially for those who are immigrant, refugee, or have less resources, how can we really talk about equity at the other levels? Yeah. I still mesmerize how education, good education is a privilege. It's really a privilege for few in this country and even in this district. Yeah. Education is not a human right. Unfortunately. It's another commodity. And good education is for those who can afford that education. And yes, we can do better. There is a surplus right now in the state coffins. And as we see that surplus, we see deficits in education, deficit in housing, even deficit in health. Let's not forget safety. And again, I go back, what do you mean about safety? Safety also include access to real quality education. And I will say it once again, what better example, what better indicator than equity doesn't really is practiced here?
Thank you, Martha. And Sarah Davis.
Thanks so much. I am a strong believer in the importance of early childhood education, as Virginia mentioned earlier. The, the evidence and research to support the impact that this can have is irrefutable. And we know, as Martha was sharing, that this is deeply tied to equity, right? And has really significant consequences for later achievement in school. So yes, I, I agree that it would be great if we had the funding to expand access to early childhood education. And the reality is that the, the state legislature and quite frankly, the federal government have continued to underfund education. We have underfunded mandates that we are required by law to provide specific services for students, but we don't receive the funding to be able to do that. And so some of that funding, right? If we could actually get the state legislature and the federal government to provide the appropriate funding to meet these mandates, that would create flexibility to be able to expand access. But I do think we have really strong early childhood education programming here in St. Louis Park, and we do have access to scholarships. We do have income-based scales for access and for cost. And so I'm a strong supporter of early childhood education. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We've got time, I think, for one more question before we go to closing remarks. And for this question, we will start with Virginia Mancini. The question is, what do you think about banning books in schools? Please explain your answer.
Well, I will lead with that. I am an English language arts teacher. And I believe that for sure, I taught juniors and seniors and now I teach seventh graders. And there are age-appropriate books. However, I also think that books allow for what I call window and mirror moments. There are windows into other people's lives and there are mirror moments when you can see yourself in the book. And there are far too many children who don't see themselves in their book, that their lived reality is not in the book. So I am not in favor of banning books for precisely because of the window and mirror opportunities for kids, but also my job as an educator is to make sure that students know how to think critically. And how am I supposed to support them in their thinking critically if I can't expose them to the ideas that are in this world? But I can't have them wrestle with ideas and move it in their brains and think about it. So that is the, that is the heart and the purpose of my classroom is to get critical thinkers so that they can go out into this world and change it and be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. And Martha Martinez, Martha Hernandez Martinez.
Oh my God, a book can open the universe for you. A book can give you dreams. A book can give you humanity. I came from a place that I needed to walk an hour because there were only four public libraries in my city. In a city of two million people, only, only, let me repeat it. Only four public libraries in a city of two million people. And I walk there because I can read books. Because I can imagine a universe, a reality, a life, that otherwise I will not have access. I was raised by two grandparents who didn't finish elementary school. My hero is my school teacher, Sonia Calero Molina, who taught me how to read. If I take away the chance to read a book, I am denying that person, that child, that human, humanity. I cannot believe that in the 22th century, when we had these gadgets, we are going to deny, we're going to tell that this book cannot be in the library, cannot be in the bookstore. Where we are living? We suffer enough. We know the price for not giving people the access to knowledge. Where we are going? Please.
Thank you, Martha. And Sarah Davis.
I am strongly opposed to banning books. You know, the book, book bans that we're seeing take hold across this country are deeply racist and anti LGBTQ plus. We're seeing books that are banning, books being banned that are about sexual and racial identity who have characters who are BIPOC or LGBTQ plus. It's deeply problematic. And it's censorship. I wrote op-ed for the Star Tribune that was published on Sunday where I talked a bit about the problems with book bans. And I think it's really important that we pay attention to racial equity and LGBTQ plus inclusion. This is a deeply held value for me. We need to lift up and celebrate our black and brown youth, our LGBTQ plus youth. And book bans are deeply harmful. So I strongly against banning books in, in schools and elsewhere.
Thank you, Sarah. And Linda Trummer.
I'm also against banning books. For the same reasons.
Very good. All right. Thank you, everyone. Next we'll go to closing statements and we will reverse our order then that we did for our opening statements. So Linda Trummer, we'll start with you.
Let's see if I can get it right this time.
One moment, one moment for the timer. Are we on a minute and a half or are we two minutes?
Two minutes. Thank you for that question.
Then just a moment to reset.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Linda.
I had it all written out here and I'm not going to look at it because what I've heard tonight doesn't even sound like the community that I've been living in for the past since 1975. The community that I raised my son in, the community that I watched hundreds of kids grow up in. The community that I played a leadership role in. I think we have a lot of people in this community that are still trying to figure out where they fit. People who are black and brown, who are living in poverty, who aren't being heard, whose, who needs aren't being met in our schools. We've taken away reading and writing intervention. We've taken away our behavior specialist. We don't have a timeout room anymore. And our classroom teachers are struggling with the additional burden, trying to figure out how they're going to deal with this stuff. And, 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 and we keep adding to the things that our classroom teachers have to deal with. With no end in sight. This just doesn't even sound like the St. Louis Park that I know. And I think we need to figure out what in the world we're doing. And as far as that early childhood education stuff goes, I don't care about state legislative money. We need to figure out where those funds need to come from so that we can help those kids get ready to start and be ready, be ready for kindergarten. We have to do this. We have to make this work. This is not the St. Louis Park I live in. So we need to wake up and pay attention. That's what I have to say. And thank you for holding this forum, by the way. I really appreciate it being here tonight.
Thank you, Linda. Next we'll go to Sarah Davis.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to my fellow candidates for this robust and really important dialogue. I've never run for office before, but when a seat opened on the school board early in 2022, I stepped up to serve because I care deeply about our community, our children in our schools, and because I believe I could have a positive impact. And even though it's only been six months, I've already been a part of some really critical work. I joined our school board policy committee and supported the passage of our inaugural racial equity policy and the significantly revised gender inclusion policy, expanding protections and accountability. I also supported passage of our recent referendum, spending a lot of time talking to community members and answering questions. These experiences are reflective of my values and approach to leadership. I believe in transparency. I believe in accountability. And I believe that we must center the voices of those most impacted by our work, students, families, and educators. I absolutely love serving on our school board and I really hope to be able to continue this work. But I'm not resting on hope. I've been working really hard to earn your trust and your vote. I've really enjoyed connecting with so many constituents as I've been out meeting with community members and door knocking. Most of the time when I'm out knocking on doors, my family's with me. Apologies to the folks who had multiple doorbell rings. It's been a unique opportunity to teach our kids about door knocking etiquette. I've also been connecting with local groups, associations, and leaders, and I'm honored to have received a letter of support from DFL Senate District 46. I have the support and recommendation of Park Association of Teachers Local 7255, as well as endorsements from Outfront Minnesota, the Minnesota Chapter of the National Organization for Women, and many of our current and former local elected officials, including our mayor Jake Spano, all of our current school board members, several city council members, and local state representative Cheryl Yulakim. I'm deeply invested in our schools and our community, and I'm really excited for what the future holds. I'm asking for your support and your vote by November 8th so that I can continue this important work. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Martha Martinez.
This has been an amazing and lightning and really critical conversation. And let me start by one point quickly here. I had two last names. Hernandez Martinez. The two last names of very strong women, my grandmother and my great-grandmother. Two single mothers who raised their children. Neither of them finished elementary education. But they really worked hard to make sure that their children, and in my case, the grandchildren and great-granddaughter had access to education. As I said before, I was raised by parents, grandparents who didn't even finish elementary school by they saw the future and the potential. Whenever a book was available to me, it was given to me. Because that was what it made possible for me to have three degrees, to speak in another language, to function, to have many roles, to publish articles in academic journals, to really sit down here and negotiate this power dynamic and the relations. I was invited to participate here because I was told that many people like me are the ones only cleaning tables, serving tables, cleaning toilets, putting roof, mowing mounds. And some of them, they don't know what's happening around us because we don't read or speak the language of the majority. And we keep talking about equity. So I saw it was about time. Instead of coming with a whole list about who I had knowing what I had done, what are all my credentials? I'm coming to here as the mother of a child who benefit of this school, as a woman who look like the ones who as a woman who look like the ones who clean tables and clean rooms and clean bathrooms, to tell you that giving us a chance, giving us an opportunity, by giving me an opportunity when you vote. We live here. We are your neighbors. If you really want to talk about equity, well, let's make be part of your community. Let's really practice that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martha. And then last, we'll hear from Virginia Mancini.
I too want to thank the League of Women Voters and my fellow candidates for this night of conversation and learning from each other. I'll be honest with you, the last three years of teaching have been the hardest of my career. And I know that you've heard that from educators before. If you listen to the news, you've heard it. But I think we need to keep listening. We need to keep listening to educators. We need to keep listening to our students. We need to keep listening to our families. Because public education is a treasure in our community.
And Jake Spahnow did, already came forward, and I'm getting out of here.
Uh, what do I do? Can I?
Thank you. Why don't you just continue? For sure.
Um, I stepped up because I believe in education. I have been an advocate for public education my entire career. I have worked for students. I have worked to get student voices. I have worked to make families more included. I have evidence of that in my career. And I, I believe that if we invest in public education, if we invest in the people who make it strong, we can make our community stronger. And that is why I'm running for school board. And that is why I'm asking for your vote on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. All right. Thank you, thank you again to everybody. And I appreciate everybody's patience as we deal with all of our technical challenges. I know it's always much better to do these in person, but it just didn't work out for us this time. So hopefully, next time, everything will be, will be a little bit more in person. All eligible St. Louis Park voters have a multiple options on how to vote, and they can choose to vote early before Election Day through absentee voting. Ballots for absentee voting are available 46 days ahead of the election and can be submitted in person or by mail instead of at a polling location. They can vote early in person at the St. Louis Park City Hall. And the early, early voting started September 23rd and will go through November 8th. And on Election Day, November 8th, they can go to their appropriate polling location. Absentee ballot applications are now available from the city, or you can request a ballot by mail from the city clerk administrator by calling 952-924-2503, or download a copy and print an application at www.stloispark.org/vote. The ballot must be received by the city no later than the day of the general election. For more information on in-person or absentee voting, please visit the City of St. Louis Park Elections webpage. The election is November 8th. Polling places, many of the polling places have changed because of redistricting. So please remember to check the location. You can go to the St. Louis Park City's website if you need to double-check. Again, thanks to other members of the League of Women Voter of St. Louis Park for helping to, to provide this Zoom candidate form and for helping with the recording. And a special thanks to Jermaine Wheeler and the City of St. Louis Park. They are going to be taking our recording and they'll publish it up to Park TV website. And then we'll also have a copy of this recording on our St. Louis Park League of Women Voters website. So thank you again to everyone. I hope you have a wonderful evening. Bye now.